Ladies and gentlemen, the appointed hour of six o'clock, and thank you to the Lexington School Board. We're talking this meeting here. I'd like to call the Lexington City Council to order and invite Chairman Head to call this board.
Call the Lexington City School Board to order.
Thank you, sir. We get together at least twice a year for the primary purpose of locking eyes, visiting, getting to know one another, and to thank you all for the tasks that you all accomplished with our precious commodity in the community. And look forward to, this time of year in particular, looking at how the start of school has been, and I see from the materials in front of us, some plans and projects coming about. So, I'll turn it over to you, Tim, for any introduction or observations or rounds of hats to Rebecca.
Well, it has certainly been an interesting time since our last meeting. It certainly, well, it just continued to be an interesting time. But really, frankly, proud of how Lexington City Schools have been managing. We see, you know, some of it's certainly good fortune, but a lot of it's due to the hard work of all the, of Rebecca and her large team and all the, all the employees of Lexington City Schools. And they're doing a great job for our young people. It's exciting to have them in school full, full, you know, five days a week, full-time, to take that significant burden off of our families in the area. And so, looking forward to talking to you now as we shift a little bit to looking a little more forward versus, you know, managing through, through COVID. And so, certainly big issues in front of us, and look forward to your insights and as well to comments you have for us to take to our partners at the Rockbridge County School Board as well. So, always happy to get that insight from you, ways in which you think we can be engaged in this process. So, I look forward to your comments.
Thank you all again. As Tim said, we are really always glad to be with you all in the fall and again in the spring. We have had a very positive opening to the school year, really. We look at all the different challenges that school districts around the state, around the nation are facing. We really couldn't be more pleased with the way schools have opened for us. We have been excited, as what Mr. Diacka said, to have all of our students back. We have had very solid attendance by our students, and our staff as well. And we have had very few cases of COVID to have to contend with in our buildings. And so, we're really happy about that. I've talked with several folks in the media about how do we attribute such low cases of COVID in the schools? And I think there's several many things that that has to do with. First and foremost, we're really small, so our numbers are quite a bit smaller. We do not have a busing system to contend with, which is the source of many quarantines for schools around the area. We also don't have high school athletics that we are contending with, which is again another source of quarantines. And I think probably the biggest thing is that our families are really working as partners with our schools. They are keeping their children at home when they are not feeling well. They are communicating well with our nurses when they have symptoms of illness and get direction from them in terms of whether it's good to bring their child to school or whether they need to seek medical advice. And then, our students and our staff and any visitors in our school community are really, really respecting and taking our mitigation strategies very seriously. So, due to all of those different pieces, we're pleased we've only had six student cases of COVID since the first day of school, August 17th, and one staff member with no transmission in our building. So, it's working very well. Our nurses and our staff are working really hard to try to keep our schools clean and healthy and safe as much as we possibly can, and we're very, very grateful to the partnership with our families. So, I'm going to keep my presentation portion very, very short this evening because I know you all had asked for some time for discussion. I did ask Randy Walters from Rockbridge County Public Schools to come and talk this evening about the Rockbridge County capital improvement projects having to do with the high school because I feel like that's probably one of the biggest topics on everyone's minds these days. So, I'm going to present just a little bit of information for you in the first packet that you have about our joint meeting. Quick enrollment update because it's always interesting, especially after last year when we all saw a drop of enrollment in our schools. To give you a quick update from last October, we had 301 students at Waddell. We're currently, as of today, sitting at 330 students at Waddell. At Littlewood Downing, we had 162 students, and we currently have 150. You may ask about that drop, and that primarily has to do with the fact that we sent a larger eighth grade class to the high school and we brought in a smaller sixth grade class. And so, those numbers are primarily having to do with the shifting classes that are coming in and out of the middle school. Our high school numbers, the March A D M. number is set on 153, but our actual number right now at the high school is 157. This time last year, we were about 167. And then, our total enrollment for K. through 12 is 637, with our budget still built on that 656 due to the whole harmless funds that we will still be able to have access to within the budget. Our enrollment has been pretty steady. We gained a few kids definitely in the summer, but since school started, we've had a few go and a few come, and a few go and a few come, but not anything of great significance in terms of enrollment. Couple of highlights regarding capital projects for the city schools. We were very excited to finally be able to blast in the small media center that was in the library, that was an open-air, small computer lab that was built when the school was constructed, but it was a very difficult space to use. And we were able to use some of our federal grant funds to be able to complete that project. It's now a reading specialist resource room. It's working out quite nicely. The sidewalk to the Roots and Shoots Garden is actually scheduled to start this week, and we anticipate it to be done possibly by the end of next week. And that will be a paved sidewalk with handrails to be able to provide good access down to the Roots and Shoots Garden. That is also being paid for with grant funds because it is an outdoor learning space for us at the school.
Is that running from the tribal area down or from the building?
It is from the back fire lane paved area. It follows the exact path that's there now, it's just really grassed over, but it will be actually a paved surface.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We were able to replace, much-needed replacement carpeting at the school board offices, which was really great to be able to get that finished this summer and complete year two of painting at Waddell Elementary School for some of our main common areas. So, future considerations that we are looking at, we are pricing, adding some window shades to the school board offices as well as to the back of Waddell. If you've been in that building, the sun coming into those classrooms is pretty brutal. And some of our teachers have tried to put up makeshift curtains and things to be able to block the glare, but we're hoping to maybe be able to price what it would cost to put some shades on the backside of the building. Also, under the American Rescue Plan project, one of the projects that we have written into that plan are some outdoor permanent shade structures for outdoor learning spaces at both schools. We know we're going to have to work with planning commission to see if that's going to be a possibility, but we were able to write that into our plan. We are using our outdoor spaces every day, all day. If you go by our schools, you're pretty much going to see groups outside in learning activities or science activities or field, visiting field trip folks that are coming and presenting the classes. So, we're looking to provide some additional shade structures for some of those kinds of events that we have during the day as well as for community use. And then, also a possible Title IV grant-funded project that we believe is going to be approved is we are going to turn a small teacher workroom space here at the middle school into an instructional kitchen for electives. This is an elective that some of our teachers were interested in providing kind of a basic cooking class for our middle schoolers to be able to take, and it's something that they're interested in. So, we've got some grant funding to be able to put in an instructional kitchen space to be able to offer a small elective. I wanted to give you an update on the school fund balance. Each of the current carryover amounts in reserve, you can see the amounts here for textbooks. The budget for the reserve for future needs from previous years, still sits at about $85,000. Reserve for future capital needs from previous years is right around $81,400. Reserve for future high school needs from previous years is $307,957. And then, the budget surplus from the FY. 21 budget was right at $16,596. We are just starting our budget process in the school. We're a little early, you know, in the year to be able to start working on that budget piece. We're starting to gather some budget inputs from the school levels to consider what needs we need to think about for building a budget for next year. We do know that what has come up from, from some of our feedback is some additional staffing needs, primarily for instructional staff support for our elementary students, whether that may be an additional special education teacher or an additional math support teacher. And we're definitely seeing that we have some needs academically of students that are in our buildings, not just as a result of the pandemic, but as a result of just individual student needs and small group needs of academics at the elementary level. We're going to revisit the office aide position that we talked about maybe two years ago for Waddell. Waddell's changed with COVID in terms of, we had a full-time nurse put into place there years ago, thinking that nurse would be able to help support the office operations. She really can't do that now. She, she is really full-time nursing all day, every day, just basic needs, but as well as responding to COVID needs, phone calls to families, contact tracing, working with V D H. So, she's not able to provide office support. And the size of school that we have is, is common pretty much in any elementary school of that size to have a second person in the office so that the secretary can do the bookkeeping, the phone calls, the receiving of guests, and all the different things that have to happen in an elementary school. So, we're hoping to revisit that position as well. In addition to this, continuing to strive for competitive pay across all employment areas to support cost of living, that has come up already from our employees and some of their input. We're continuing to modify the hourly pay rate to reflect an increase in minimum wage. We desperately need to increase our subpay again. We're falling behind. We felt like we were kind of catching up again, and then they've increased again around the area, so we really need to look at another increase for subpay. And we really need to look at the health insurance cost to our employees and their families. I hear that consistently from our teachers that if you have, and I've got some head nods over here, if you have not just yourself to contend with with health insurance, it is almost impossible to live on what you bring home after you pay for your health insurance for you and your family members. So, that's something that I'm hoping to be able to work with the city on, looking at what kinds of offerings we have and what kind of contributions the school division can And so, that's the end of my very short, I promised I would be very short and hit enrollment, a little bit about budget, a little bit about projects. And I have asked Randy Walters, who is the Chief Operating Officer for Rockbridge County Schools, to come and talk to you this evening about the Rockbridge County High School Capital Improvement Plan, which has been modified. As we spoke in the spring, that they had completed their facility study and had modified their plans, some of their timelines and projects for the high school. Going to speak about that and also about the Floyd S. K. renovation plan, which I'm sure you've seen and heard about and read about in the paper. He's brought some information to share with you all this evening. Before I bring him in, are there any questions on, on my portion?
From the House of Representatives.
Stop. In the school board office, do you want me to use this? In the school board office, was the preschool there this, are they there this year? No. And how is that space being used for the plans for the future? Sure. So, currently, that space is being used. We have one space used for technology because we have lots of computers and Chromebooks and devices that are coming in and being swapped out and using that for kind of a technology workspace. The second larger classroom is actually being used by our yoga and mindfulness elective that's being taught this year by Laura Joyner at the middle school. And so, it's a really great, large space for students to be able to spread out. We have probably, I don't know, 18 students taking that class, and we're using that classroom space. It's only offered two times a quarter, so it's not being used all year long, but it's being used daily currently as an elective space for that class. But the preschool did not reopen this fall. Thank you. This happened at preschool, but also I'm sure you can use the extra space. It's great to have the extra space, but we really do miss our neighbors for sure.
Are they planning to come back next year or?
They are not.
Okay. Good. Other questions for members of council?
Not a question, just a, I've noticed support for the health insurance addressing because when I jumped into the school system and saw what, if it wasn't just you, you had to pay health insurance for your entire family, what was left of paycheck was nothing. And is that direction from the state on that, or is that, how is that policy different than regular city employees? And that's going to take for the public to understand the difference between those two, in, in church programs, what, how, how do they differ somewhat?
So, typically, our finance department, Tommy, who is having no wonder with us, and, and our school board decide about the contribution piece of that. So, for Lexington City Schools employees, if you're just getting the health insurance as the employee, the cost is very minimal.
Right.
Very minimal, like less than, less than $20 a pay period. But once you add on, we pay that employee's portion plus a small portion towards if it's employee plus one or employee plus family. So, one of the things we had talked about last year was the need to see how can we increase the contribution that we can pay towards that family plan, and that's just going to have to be a budget item.
Okay. Also, I'd like to, to support your efforts and the substitute pay. I hear, anecdotally, people that will go down a lot of time because their subpay is quite a bit.
Well, it's, it's all of us, all over the state, they're jumping, I mean, way higher than, than we are. And we, we were close last year, we were catching up to Rockbridge, and then they jumped again.
Yeah.
So, we bumped ours this summer, but they bumped again this fall. So, we're, and we, we need to make some changes.
Maybe you should go past that.
I would love to do that.
Take.
Just got to figure out where the money is. But yes, absolutely. It's, it's a need, and it's something we probably may have to address during the school year if we can.
Chair Robinson, what I hear you saying is expectation that the city's health insurance is different than the school board's, and it's not necessarily different. The pure medical is pretty expensive to spread out to family and others. And I would tell you, from my experience, in the non-academic higher ed insurance, it's like that's widespread, so it's not, it's not competitive, but certainly taking care of our teachers and our employees needs to be a high priority, good health insurance fits that. That's not uncommon in a corporate, but city and schools. Is all good?
Yes, while we're talking about pay, I've always been concerned about our paraprofessionals and if you're having any way to see clear to give them a boost in pay.
We're definitely looking at that. It's high on our agenda as well. You know, we, when we spent some time the last two years or so comparing our salaries in different positions to other areas, we are definitely right there in the ballpark. In fact, looking at about six different school divisions, we are the second highest in terms of what we pay our paraprofessionals. It's still not enough, and we know that. It is something that we're looking at as board. It's something my board has brought to my attention that they would like us to look at in terms of raising that bottom line up and then continuing to help support those folks be, be paid at a higher rate. So, it is something that's high on our agenda. We just need to figure out how to make it happen within the bottom line.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to echo that, yeah, we, we were talking about that because we acknowledged that not only, you know, for those sorts of positions, we are competing with other school districts, but of course, we're competing with other sorts of jobs that those folks could do. And, you know, it's just, it is going to be a challenge. Wage pressure is everywhere, you know, particularly in those sorts of areas. And so, it's going to be difficult to work it within the budget constraints that we'll have, but.
It's a goal.
It's a goal.
Chair Robinson. I have a question about pay, continuing that. Governor Northland came out with a suggestion statewide that $15 an hour be the paid level, minimum paid level. Where do we stand relative to that?
So, last year, when the minimum wage went up in May to $9.50, and then it goes up again this coming January to $11 an hour, the main people that we pay on an hourly rate are our food nutrition staff. And so, when we did their salaries for this year, we made sure that they were making at least $11 an hour and up based on their years of experience so that we were going to be fined during this school year in terms of being at that minimum wage requirement. That, just for our food service staff, cost us about $16,000 as a school district to get our folks up to that level. We will have to continue to make that bump as we go into next year because, as you know, over the next four years, I believe, it jumps each January. As far as our paraprofessionals, they are salaried employees, so we don't look at their, their pay per se on an hourly rate basis, but we've done a little bit of that on the side just recently, just to kind of see where those folks lie so that we have an idea are we even close to that. We're close to that $11 an hour in most positions, but we're a little under in a couple of those positions. So, we're looking at that internally to kind of see what it would cost us to be able to get those folks up to that same level of minimum wage pay and moving forward because it is jumping rapidly year by year.
Right. The, the state's 15, what, was a stage increase year by year, so what, what hit all at once.
Correct.
And that's a way for systems to adjust and budgets and whatnot to do. And so, it would be for substitutes, what is, what is our substitute, does it work out? What's the hourly rate that we're working?
I, I'll be honest, have, have you calculated the hourly for subs?
Y'all pay about a day.
We pay about a day, and I could, I could calculate it for you. We, we pay 80 a day for our substitutes and 90 a day for our long-term substitutes.
So, if we talk eight hour days, that's 10 bucks.
Yeah, pretty much.
And so, 120 would be 15. And then, look at that. So, those, those are numbers that are real.
Or big budget numbers, correct.
Right. Those are numbers that are real and being imposed upon us statewide.
Yes.
And they're doing, thank you.
And we are studying that and trying to see what, what that's going to mean for us in, in the big scheme, but I've been working with our new finance personnel, looking at that for many of our positions.
But given that we, the paraprofessionals are nine work employees.
Paraprofessionals are 183-day contract employees, so they only work 183 days, which is every day students are there plus three teacher workdays at the beginning of the year, but they are paid over 24 pay periods so that they are paid throughout the school year. But they are 183-day contract employees, which basically is about a half of the year when you look at it across your days of the year, but they are considered full-time because they are a full-time school level, school schedule employee. Our teachers are 200-day employees as a comparison.
Just thinking out loud, back to the substitute thing, wondering what do we do to supply our substitutes if we hesitate at 15?
Well, I feel like it would probably go up there. I think you're right.
And are we talking about scarcity of substitutes at this time?
We always have a scarcity of substitutes. It was always tricky. Now, we, we have not, knock on wood, we haven't had trouble securing a substitute when they are needed on a day-to-day basis, but our sub list is very slim.
But given that it's our staff, for the most part, it's healthy and committed, so we don't have a shortage.
We are very.
Sure dedicated staff.
Good insurance.
Yeah, I was just curious, your, your pool of substitutes, I mean, what is that normally relative, how?
How many are on a sub list?
Yeah.
12 to 15 people.
Okay.
What we find interesting about that is, or what's challenging with that is, we have folks who say, well, I'll sub it on Fridays, or I only want to sub at the middle school, or I can only sub Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Right.
But we have some amazing dedicated substitutes that come in and sub for us on a very regular basis, and they are fantastic folks to work with. And we're lucky, this fall, we've been able to add one or two each month. We've had some folks apply, we've had some parents, because we put out some word to parents that we were looking for substitutes. I think we've had three parents that have signed on as substitutes since school started, which is great. And we're just continuing to promote that.
Their children must hate that.
They'd be surprised.
But on any given day, like, on average, like, how many substitutes are working in our system?
That's a great question. I, I would say on average at the elementary school, two to four in a day, some days none, but two to four in a day. At the middle school, one maybe in a day. So, it's not, not a whole lot. Fridays are hard because people end up taking, scheduling appointments on Fridays to extend that weekend, or you end up taking a personal day on a Friday. But, but for the most part, our teachers are very careful. They, if they can take a half a day, they take a half a day. You know, if they can do the appointments in the afternoon, they try to do that. But we, we have a couple of long-term planned subs coming up this year that we're going to have to be planning for as well. So, it's always a challenge. Always looking for subs, though. So, if you know someone, we'll try to pay them better, Dr. Mr. Allinger, but we'll get there.
That was my first job at college, and I, they kept me there between preschool and high school and the preschools in a city.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did, I subbed as well.
Just briefly, obviously, up and down the valley, some schools have been adjusting their schedules, you know, partly due to transportation issues and so forth. Just wondering if any consideration has been given to that locally?
I, I really feel like we're in a good place right now to kind of stay the course. I've been reading every article of every school division that's changing their schedules and their calendars, and when you read about any of those groups, it has to do with the fact that they are either short-staffed because they're not fully staffed with teachers. So, teachers recovering these periods, you know, class periods during their planning times, and so they're trying to relieve teachers by offering some early release days or some teacher planning days to be able to give back some of that planning time. They're short on bus drivers, and so their bus routes are longer, and teachers are having longer duties in the afternoon, so again, trying to give back some of that time as well. Those are the primary reasons. We are very, very lucky that we are fully staffed with the exception of, we're still trying to hire one paraprofessional. We're still trying to hire an additional part-time custodian, and we just haven't had many applications for those jobs. But those were extra add-on positions, so they are not leaving a gap, but they are going to fill a need when we have the opportunity to hire those. But we are fully staffed, we are able to get the substitutes that we need. It's a challenge sometimes, but we are able to get the substitutes that we need. We don't have problems with busing issues. The other big piece is, is we are not doing any virtual instruction this year because all of our students are in-person. So, our teachers have a very, they are, I'm not, they are working extremely hard, there's no doubt, they are stressed, it's a lot to manage, but they're not planning for virtual and in-person instruction like they were last year, which was an incredible challenge for our staff. Instead, when our students have had to be out for any kind of home quarantine situation, our students are receiving asynchronous instructional assignments, they're connecting with their teachers via email or phone or virtually, but our teachers are not needing to have that additional planning time to be able to do that. So, we're staying the course for right now, I believe. I haven't had any concerns brought to me from the board or from teachers on that. Our administrators are working very hard to preserve daily planning time for teachers, not scheduling meetings during those times. We don't have any extended duty times currently. We really are trying to have a focus division-wide on wellness for students and staff in terms of mental wellness and emotional and physical wellness. And we are making sure that on teacher workdays, we're also not scheduling meetings so that teachers can have time to do what they need to do to plan. That said, I will continue to monitor all that and see how things go, and if we need to come back and revisit any kind of changes, we can do that. We are, however, looking at next year's calendar. I am going to be looking at trying to add some additional teacher workdays and collaborative planning days into our scheduled calendar so that our teachers can do some of the work that they need to do on a, on a workday versus always after school. So, currently, we're, we're doing okay, but thank you for asking.
Chair Robinson.
Not about substitutes.
Okay.
When my son was in the school system, SOL began and a whole different thing, but one of the things that we observed was that city schools ranked at the tippy-top of the SOL scores. And currently, they're not at the tippy-top. Things have slipped. I was just wondering how we're addressing that issue of slippage, what has caused the management of that level that we used to enjoy routinely. We would always expect, you know, you may know that two kids in math and whatnot, and so math scores are always good. And of course, but they're not up there now, and I was wondering how that is figuring into your plans.
Sure. I, I think the biggest thing to talk about is just the change in the needs of children that we're serving in our schools. I taught in Lexington City Schools 28 years ago. Our population looked a bit different 20-some years ago in terms of the challenges and the things that children are bringing with them to school, whether it is dealing with home situations that are less than ideal, whether it's dealing with mental health concerns and all the different challenges that come with students. We have a lot of folks that are, have moved into the area and have moved into our city that are, that are at different levels of achievement. And so, we're addressing students where they are and taking them to the next level as, to the best that we can do that. I was actually very, very pleased with our spring SOL test scores. If you happen to see the average of scores of SOLs in the state of Virginia, our scores were well above that in terms of our pass rates in, in. were well above that in terms of our pass rates in in all testing areas, and we actually, through a pandemic, had a couple of tested SOL areas that increased, which I don't know how that happened, but it did. I have to give all the credit to our teachers and our families, because there was a very challenging but hard-earned partnership that happened last year through a pandemic and through a year where we were virtual for a large part of the school year, and then we were in-person some, back in-person, back virtual for a bit. But through all of that, our teachers worked harder than I've ever seen them work before, and our teachers work hard every day, but they provided solid, in-person synchronous instruction four days a week. They were working with our students four days a week last year, and then on that fifth day, connecting with students and making sure that they had what they needed. And I think our parents, as challenging as the situation was last year, they did their part to help our students be successful, and so our scores actually looked pretty good this spring. We always have room to grow, and we definitely have some subgroups that need more growth than others. So we are consistently meeting with our teachers, both principals hold data meetings every quarter, and they're looking at how students are performing on assessments, they're looking at benchmark testing that is conducted in reading and math every quarter. In fact, our kids are, I'll be honest, tested to death during the first weeks of school because of the state. We have this year, growth assessments that were brand-new this year, we had to basically give a mini SOL to our third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in the first several weeks of school to kind of see where they had slid since the spring, and that was a big challenge, particularly for our third graders who have never seen an SOL test before. But we are doing growth benchmarks, we have PALS testing, which is about early reading skills, we do beginning-of-the-year math assessments, and then we have typical benchmarks at the end of each quarter, and we're trying to find a balance of all of those things so that we can use that data to plan for instruction and to know where our students need support from a reading specialist, or a math specialist, or a special education teacher, or the general classroom teacher. We definitely know that we have some students who have academic needs, and we're addressing those day by day. There's a lot that has to do with that, we expanded our summer school program this year, we're looking to do some after-school intervention programs potentially over the next couple of months, and then just looking at that on a day-to-day basis, but overall, I'm really proud of the work that our teachers and our students are doing.
And almost the same, standardized testing has been politicized, and all it takes is one or two kids in a small sample size to have, not to give their 110%.
Yes.
And sometimes they get that mindset from home or from somewhere else.
Yes.
And sometimes kids just don't take their standardized tests seriously, and it's a race to get it done in five minutes instead of taking the whole time to do it, and in those cases, you draw down the scores. Because I know for a fact, some kids that could be doing well, don't take them seriously, and that can that can impact scores. So it's a combination, I'm sure, but just like everything in life, politics has ruined standardized testing, and there's a lot of families that say, I don't want my kid doing, or hey, son, you don't have to do a very good job.
And Mr. Sigur, I'll add to that two things, one, I really take a lot of pride in the fact that our teachers don't push the SOLs as being, you've got to do, I mean, they just don't make it a stress for our children. It's enough of a stress, because you say SOL, and a first grader knows what you're talking about, they've heard the term, and that's sad, but I really think our teachers really try to make it, it's part of what we do during the year, but it is one test on one day, and it does not show what our kids know and can do.
But I can recall when my son came home from Waddell one day, and after experiencing one of these standardized tests, and parents asked their kids how to go and whatnot, and he took an oval mark on test today.
We used to take oval marking tests, not anymore, but we used to.
But it wasn't big deal.
No, that's right, that's right. The other piece I'll add is, is that the state has added some other options for families to be able to, it's not an opt-out, but it's basically a refusal, and we did have some families who refused for their children to take SOL tests this year, they just, they're not, they can refuse to do that, that does count against the school system. So when a parent opts their student out or chooses for their student not to take the SOL, we get a zero for that. So that does impact the score, especially when you're talking about small numbers. Mr. Sigur, one of the numbers I will bring to your attention, and one of our struggling subgroups, that we are always trying to figure out, what more can we do are students with disabilities, and our students with disabilities struggle with an SOL test because they have a disability, and they're given a test that every other student is supposed to be able to pass. Last year, our SOL scores for students with disabilities was low, we're talking 14 children. 14 children is what those scores are based on. So we're working very hard to look at each of those 14 children as an individual and address their learning needs, but they may not pass that SOL, as long as they're making gains on their individual education plan, then that's what we're very pleased about.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that also, just a couple of years ago, Waddell was recognized nationally as one of a few hundred schools with the blue, as a blue-ribbon school, so we are still doing incredibly well, there are year-to-year fluctuations, but overall, we're still an exceptional school district.
Thanks.
And frequently, it's interpreting the numbers, understanding the numbers, and Paul we recommended, two, one question and observation, can you remind me how much AARP money the school receives?
We're about $451,000, I believe, for American Rescue Plan funds, we have, we submitted our application in late August, due September 1st, and we've gotten a programmatic approval, but we have not gotten a formal approval to be able to start any of our plans we're spending at that point. We did just also receive $29,000 for special education AARP funds, so we've written a grant for those funds to be expended, they have to be directly related to COVID-19 under special education, so it gets a little trickier, but we're trying to make good access to those funds.
And some great resources on the, through BML, to verify how this spend or refunds of our conferences to ask for them. So if you have any questions on that, knowing that you've met the right people.
Sure.
And if you can share with us, as you draft that information, how you plan to utilize that money, we'd love to know.
It's all on our website, we were required to have it on the website by June, so everything, go to our new beautiful website, by the way, you can go to the finance, I think it's under our finance tab, and find the American Rescue Plan and CARES Act funds with our description of what we're looking to spend, the whys, how it's connected to COVID-19, it's all very descriptive there on the website, I have it sent to the link if you'd like as well.
You told us where it is, we'll find it.
Yes, great.
Mary, I just wanted to make the observation, I'm glad that not to see SROs on the wish list, and even later, very excited to see the additional instructions that are supported the children, I think that's much more appropriate, and thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
With no further ado, Randy, if you want to come up and pass this in the podium, the term of microphones are ready to hear you, loud and proud, don't get confused on the numbers here.
Thank you very much, thank you very much for having me tonight and inviting me off to speak. I brought two documents to share with you. The first document is our CIP plan, capital purpose plan, and what I did is to separate out just the RC adjust projects for you tonight as we go through and remove all the other projects that we have in our plan. So tonight, we'll only be looking at the RC adjust projects. Also, the second document you have is the plan for Boyd-SK, the document that was provided by Quinn Evans, the firm that completed our feasibility study. Before, capital. While we're getting that ready, I will, like, explain to a couple of things about our CIP plan, and we did a feasibility study, and Quinn Evans was the firm that completed that study, and we took the results of that study and the projects and recommendations from that study and incorporated those into our CIP plan. The board supervisors asked us to prioritize the projects that were recommended from the study, and we took those and made a priority list and then incorporated those into the CIP plan. Boyd-SK was ranked as the number-one need among the nine projects that were suggested from the plan. Quinn Evans, the board supervisor, also asked us to go back to Quinn Evans and ask him to separate the Boyd-SK project out as a standalone project, since it was ranked number-one, pull that project out, and that would be our first focus would be Boyd-SK. So that's the document that we have in front of you tonight. We updated our budget numbers, the CIP plan, it's just a movement target when it comes to budget, it's very difficult to predict what the costs are going to be five years out, nine years out, so we went back to Quinn Evans and asked for some updated budget numbers and to try to pinpoint a more accurate picture of what the costs we would actually look at. And I also wanted to say that we did take our priorities and plug those into our CIP plan based on our current debt service schedule. So we took our debt service schedule and looked at the next 20 years and plugged in the projects where we would have the least impact on our community as far as raising taxes. So we think we've done a pretty good job of matching those two documents up so that the cost, it's not a huge burden on the taxpayers for these projects. And you'll see that on the CIP plan, you'll notice that it does say draft, the CIP plan is not approved by our school board yet, I presented it at last month's meeting, and it will go for approval at next week's school board. So that's why you see the term draft on the project. So at this time, I will just go through the projects that are on the list, and FY, the first year that's coming up, you'll see that repair of the RC adjust football stadium concrete, that's the only project that we have on for the current school year that we're in, and that project has been approved by both the board supervisors and our school board, and that will be completed after this season, football season is completed. The next year, 22, you'll see that we have a plan to replace the visitor side leechers at the stadium complex, and also the Boyd-SK project, renovation project is on there, and that's a total of $7.8 million for that project. The next year, in FY '24, you'll see that there are no projects listed, and that would have to do with the income money that's in our debt service, that very little come off of our debt service list, so it was not a good time to add additional debt in, so you'll see that some years, there are no projects that add in there. I'm not a finance major, so I don't understand how all of that works, because I know that loans have different years, kind of in different terms to them, so that would be a question for your finance director, or how all of that works, or may or may not. And FY '25, construction of an auxiliary gym at the high school, and replace the gymnasium leechers inside our gym, construction of the auxiliary gym, that's been a priority for us for a number of years, you'll know that most of our students practice at Marter Middle School, and are bused to different locations without a family for practices. We feel construction of an auxiliary gym is a huge need for our high school kids. In FY '26, you'll see it's another year where there are no projects that are on our CIP plan. FY '27, we'll get into the athletic piece of the CIP plan, you'll see that the tennis court expansion, currently, we only have three tennis courts at the high school, all of our matches are played at the Lexington Volley Country Club, so we need, there's a need to expand so that we can host home meets at the high school. Yeah, that'd be great.
We share a household.
Thank you. The junior parking lot is currently gravel, we spend quite a bit each year to refurbish that parking space in order for our students to use it for the next year. There are currently no concession stands, four restaurants, and our baseball softball and tennis area, there's a field house in the locker room area, remodelable weight room, our current weight room is the old wrestling room at the high school, very small, very green, in need of some updating, the wrestling, the wrestlers now practice at Marter River in the wrestling room of the middle school, and that does create some problems because our high school kids have to practice after the middle school wrestling team, so our high school kids practice late in the evening, because they're the kids that can drive to practice later on, and then turn for the football stadium. And then FY '27, there are no projects, and FY '28, '29, you'll see that that's going to lead into the major renovations at Rockford County High School. So this is a quick overview of our CIP plan and the projects for Rockford County High School in the future.
Water money.
Yes, sir.
Have a council other question for you. Randy, I've been hearing about the auxiliary gym, and depending on who you talk to, some folks say there's no plan for the construction of an auxiliary gym on your campus, since you are on the spot, can I ask you that question?
Yeah, where would the, where would the auxiliary go? It would, the plans that I've seen, of course, that was just one architect's suggestion, would be to expand that out beside the current gym and into the bus lot. The locker rooms would be in there.
Another question from the council.
Mr. Allinger, in just hearing things, conversation, whatnot, there's been discussion about a new high school, and this plan doesn't have a need, and it's fixing up the old one, if they want to fix this now, whatnot, and I thought I was hearing things about consolidating on the high school core, the middle school and the new high school. Where's those things, am I all wet on that, or where are those things happening?
I have not been involved in any conversations that had consolidation of the middle school with the high school kids together, I've heard a little bit about renovating versus building a new school, and when you say, pronounced in $40,000 renovation, would you just say we can build a new high school, and what would cost that would be? Quinn Evans, the firm that did the study for us, is focused heavily on renovation, they're they're not a firm that, that, they will build you something new, but they focus on renovating, and when we went through the RRP for selecting a firm, that was a huge piece for the selection committee, was we wanted a firm that would focus on renovation instead of, and the two, the other had to do with where we could build a new high school, what options would we have in our town if we're building a new high school, where would that be? From what I understand, those options are very limited.
Hey, I have a question. Yeah, just quick, Randy, can you remind me, when is the the high school built, I mean, how old is this construction?
It's approaching 30 years, so for the first year of the high school, 2008, now Boyd-SK, 37, and then into 2014, together.
Randy, do you remember the number that the Marter River Middle School expansion remodel?
Pause. I would say 33 million.
33 million, and so we think, I mean, right now, we think that in the year 2028 or 2029, that the high school will be like half of that.
Okay.
I was thinking it was closer to 36 million.
Pleasantly.
I think so, and I would say, first, we built a new high school, and then that's just had studios full of $100 million.
Sir.
Hope to figure out, I think, in our needs, but maybe $50,000. So one of the things covered in the conference at BML was the idea of kind of a mile of driving in the rural part of Brooklyn, driving to get all of Virginia's coverage, and it could help, you know, legislate a solution for legal schools and stuff like that, and it came, and that's how we're doing, beautiful, new, and we're doing it. Fairness, how beautiful, new and very creative. Stay tuned, we'll see what happens in the legislature. If you have any questions from council members, welcome Katie Schester to the school board that you're going to work with us and thank you to Monique, Tim and Tammy for your continued support. Thanks to team members and please take our thanks back to all of your team and your school board. And this support is going to keep you all together and make sure you all look sort of smart and capable as you're clear. So Stephanie, thank you for the work that you do. Unless there's anything else, questions or closing comments?
I think.
I don't see that. Oh, sorry.
And Dr. Pete Thompson will say, I just, I neglected to make a photocopy of a document for you all, so I just sent you an email, that's what I was doing on my phone, with the spreadsheet with Lexington City's share of those expenses laid out over the FY 22 to FY 29 based on these proposed projects and our current 15.3% contribution that we pay. So just as a reference for you all, but I apologize, I didn't have a copy, but I just sent it to you by email, so I'm sorry.
And our debt service for this building goes away in 26, 27. Is that, or is it 28, 29? Okay. I should.
Thanks. The next document that we'll look at, quick one for recording our, the end of the time, is the Foyes K, the feasibility, or Quinn Evans did do their study and came back with, this is the first drawing, first attempt, suggestions for Foyes K. You'll see that you have the picture there that's on the screen and all of this is in there handout. That's the current configuration of Foyes K and the current high school layout right next to it. The area that's kind of grayed out is the current high school layout. The area in blue is the current layout of Foyes K. I did put in a program assessment just from the feedback, Quinn Evans did interview all stakeholders. Thank you all for filling out those surveys when they were sent out a couple of years back. Great response from both groups on those surveys. But for the facility assessment, you can see when it was built, a brief history of the building and just an analysis of all the different areas in the building from plumbing, mechanical, electrical, all of those areas and a summary of those areas are provided there for you. You can see some of the stakeholder comments and feedback. Everyone was on the same page that Foyes K is going to be critical to us in the future for providing students a ready for employment heading out. So everyone, one of us or most of those that responded and talked about the importance of Foyes K in our community. You'll see the recommendations that the firm did add. I do want to point out two areas here. One, available roof system and in the environment of the building. As you know, we were able to replace the roof several years ago. So that cost will come out of the 7.8 figure there. We pressed the firm to provide us with a number, what number did they put in for the firm for the price of one of the roof? And they said that they would have to do a deeper study depending on what we added, whether to change the building, all of those things. But what we've already done with replacement of the A track and replacement of the roof will not be impacted as it is things that we can take out of this, but it's not something that we did and will have to redo. Got to the recommendations that are there and recommended solutions. You can see over on the side that all of the electrical, the mechanical, the plumbing, fire protection, all are aged out. Again, the building was built here in the 70s. I know that the school board meets there next month. If you wanted to do a tour, I would be glad to show you the building. But the building is, our CTE program is amazing at the high school. They do some incredible things and it's a really, really strong program. So the building recommendations that were made from the sketch and you can see some of the programs, if you read through the program assessments, we interviewed a lot of the community stakeholders, local businesses, some areas that were identified. There's a need for our EMT program that we currently don't have at the high school, hospitality, a couple others, a home insecurity. And of course, those are the needs of the community are constantly changing. So one of the things that we stress throughout as we get recommendations and sketches for this is we want our spaces to be flexible. Right now, with the CTE program classrooms, you know, it's an ongoing candidate for the lifts and you know, it's very hard for the spaces to be interchangeable. So we want to make sure that the space that we have building in the future is flexible. So that 10 years from now, if the needs in the community change, we can still use that space for whatever the community needs. And right now, that's very hard. The area in blue is our area, areas that they suggested primarily adding and add classroom and moving our culinary arts program over to where our current kitchen cafeteria is at the high school so that those two programs can work together. Expanding our nursing and CNA program, expanding some online learning down to the very bottom. A lot of the folks felt like Foyes K and the CTE center needed their human entrance and they needed to stand out. And it's kind of hidden, there's a sign there that says Foyes K, but they wanted to do the Foyes K building to make a statement. This is, you know, the CTE center. There's also space at the bottom that needs to be way for community partner collaborations with students now doing internships and building co-ops out in the community. We wanted collaboration space, public insurance, things of that nature, so that would be at the bottom as well. They did break it down and areas of renovation, you can see the red is heavy, the blue is medium and the gray is lighter renovation. One of the challenges that we had at the whole place is trying to renovate while students are in the building and that would be a huge piece that we tackle when we start designing and meeting with the firm, the section to draw up all the plans. There are bases of recommendations there and timelines that are provided for you over at the side. That's right. You can see on the page, there's kind of a timeline there for you of when the heavy work will happen, when the lighter work will happen, I think, kind of construction, kind of May 1, in May of 2023, once we have all the documents, all the plans, all the permits and so forth. So we're a couple of years out before we would actually, you know, break ground on the renovation, but definitely working towards that. The bottom page that you have is probably the most important, the page that you're looking for. That has a breakdown of the cost for the project and a timeline provided as well. There's a little more detail. I will point out that initially, two years ago, when the study was completed, the first figure that came in was $4.6 million. You can see now, that figure is 7.7. And we had pressed, you know, again, the firm, give us the detailed explanation for this cost. There's a lot of different indicators there for why the cost jumped up several million dollars. That's to do with, you know, several different things, pulling the project out, making a standalone project or not part of the labor renovation. There was an increased cost there, just of course, also labor, materials, supplies, all of those things. But I can give you more detailed information for this cost indicators. Sorry to rush through then. Our time's tight right now.
Well, just, shall we take all this out for you? For the council, any questions?
Well, the primary, Randy, the Foyes K is part of Rockbridge County High School or the two southern organizations?
It is part of Rockbridge County High School.
Okay. $620,000, $650,000 for the main entrance of the zone to bring some renovation. Another question I have is, how does this integrate with the program that down in this league customer, community college, to make the change happens at this point? Because I've seen that a lot of these segments are handed glove from our offer of EMT or some of the other things.
Right, we are communicating with that, yes, Lancaster on those programs and that they use our building in the evenings for some of their classes at Rockbridge County High School. And that is one of the options that we are considering, you know, when we do go through renovations, do we bus our kids to down during the time of instruction and renovation or do we go with a trailer out back? We have 12 classrooms in that area, it'd be very difficult for us to have 12 mobile classrooms on one campus of the high school. It's a pretty tight, landlocked area. And then what would that mobile classroom look like? You know, you'd have automotive, auto body, you know, that's very hard to do that in a mobile classroom. You're actually going to have. We did have during COVID, when kids were needed to be outside spaced out more, we did create mobile CTE labs and then car trailers, you know, we just about everything and had it set up in our bus lot. Those are the things that we'll certainly consider as well.
Yeah, I want to add, Randy, that that really is going to be eventually opening a center and being a listener down down. And it could be that if you have the bus students, you're going to have to go to the lift and you just go get a list up.
So none of the costs in the 7.7 accounts for temporary classrooms or transportation to other locations? Because I feel like when we built Waddell, it was included in those dollars, significant cost to rent the trailers, that was hinted. Because that was, having living it up is a lot of money. Okay. So this number could obviously, we know it's going to go up and all, Randy, we know that there's a huge part of it that's missing.
Correct, correct. And we were hoping, and we did ask the firm about that, they provided us the number you mentioned, it would be about a half a million dollars, depending on the number they needed and where we would put them to run utilities to those trailers. But we were hoping, you know, the cost of the roof coming out, cost of A track updating, would all set that cost.
Other questions, council members?
I'll just make a comment that I think is wonderful. This is long overdue and it's needed in our community. And I will, I guess some of the supervisors mentioned it, I hope we're talking a few of this, not from the loser school system, but there's programs on here. In the past, that we've worked together and I hope we continue with that because that makes sense from an economic standpoint and just a number standpoint to work together. But thank you for your work on those.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. When I was a assistant principal at the high school, we saved two spots for Mermer Flow students to come in for every program and they did the same for us. We transferred kids back to that one cabinet, making carpentry, you know, back then we would send our kids there and we would share back and forth.
Collaboration. Randy, thank you and school board, thank you.
Thank you very much for having me. You're buzzing in the morning.
Very good. With that, we will have German City Council's work session.
Yeah, and we'll adjourn the school board's work.
It is currently 7:03 and the grade will be 1:00 and 7:10 will start the payback council meeting.